Hey, welcome to the evening. You have a reading pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. If you remember that word, which is stand. I'm God, indivisible, evergreen, and just as well.
She is not. These are all on?
Okay, I am here tonight to offer a grant to ask that I be allowed to apply for a grant that the state, the Indiana Supreme Court, the CASA office is offering. It's a grant for up to $45,000. Powers are not, we're pressing that much on the grant. I have to close in 22,000. This will be using our wellbeing tool and our case management system to raise the need of CASA volunteers for cases. With the simple nation, we will assign CASA volunteers and staff as needed. This funding will eliminate the current and future wait lists for children and volunteers. I hire a part-time person. As a reminder, this person is not a county employee and is not eligible for county medicines to oversee the wellbeing program and cases and volunteers. CASA is mandated by the state to advocate for every child that is a child who has served since the pandemic. So this program and this grant will also address volunteer recruitment and retention and hopefully build that base back up.
So the program hits new?
It is a new program, yes.
Well, would you make your motion to have two of them apply for the grant?
Yes, we do the motion.
I'll make a motion for, or go ahead and apply for CASA.
Yes, move and seconded. Make the request of 22,000 dollars. Another discussion. All favors the honor. I have a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other request. The childhood youth awareness, monitoring control and every year we put the DCS office and the CASA office with wooden wheels around the corner of the courthouse door. And you are asking that that be allowed to happen again this year. We tried to make it towards retention walls so they don't have to take what we have to do. Asking that we be allowed to put pinwheel around it. Any call?
Let's just hold on the table.
Just the front table.
Do you have a motion to accept this request? Would it second it in any other discussion? All favors the honor.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Good evening, everybody. First, some updates on the Justice Center. First thing I've got is returning to you with the change order request that we discussed two weeks ago that we declined to approve at the time. As I have informed you electronically, I went back to both Ton and Blank and Luminot Rowland tried to get that straightened out. Brian Delitz, the senior project manager at Ton and Blank said, acknowledge it should have been caught whether by the architects, by the subs, or both. It wasn't. But either way, it is something necessary, especially the fire damper part of that, which is necessary unless we want to fail inspection, in which case we won't be able to use our beautiful new multi-million dollar building addition. I also spoke with the architects. As you know, we do have a new architect, we've had a new architect on the project since December, so he was not part of the original drawings. He said basically, yeah, this should have been caught. I wasn't here, I'm sorry that it's the case. I understand the frustration. If you look at a typical project of this capacity, when both renovation and new construction are part of it, you should expect 5% to 10% of the contract amount in contingencies. So far, we are well below that. And if you look at contingencies that we can actually trace to screw ups like this, small things here and there versus contingencies where we were all told at the beginning of the project that we didn't need to replace those two small roofs, or there were utility lines that even the, like the civil engineer who had already done work for the town didn't over there. The actual change orders attributable to architecture, architect screw ups are really minimal. It is frustrating that we keep coming back for nickeling and diming, but we're only at about $13,000 total cost added on because of architect problems. And I am, I've said before, hopeful that with Matt on this project now and with having Ton and Blank secured before we've started the design work, so that they're able to coordinate more effectively from the get-go, that the courthouse will not have, it'll probably have its own issues because of the building itself, but will not likely have some of these human errors that really probably should have been avoided. So in the name of passing inspection and being able to get our occupancy permit, I will ask you to approve that change order request for $6,102.11. It is change order request number 19. It's fire dampers and mechanical ductwork in a room in the basement that needs to extend a little bit.
I have a motion to approve change order number 19. Move and seconded? Any discussion? I'd just reaffirm to the gentleman that you get an average, you also mean a low number.
I like, I like that. I will make sure he knows that.
All favors the honor. You have a copy of that, Nathan?
Um. That's fine. That'll be fine. Really what's important is the formal AIA document signature. This one, if I just email them and tell them to get that to us, that's all that's crucial. Couple of updates on the progress. Following steps have been accomplished since I last reported. Fireproofing is finished. First floor drywall installation, second floor in-wall mechanical, electrical, and plumbing installation, second floor lobby demolition for new meeting rooms and passage to the courtroom, plumbing tie-ins and booking, interior masonry work, painting and booking, second floor inspection and second floor door frame installation. Following steps are currently underway. Continuing with the exterior masonry, they're finishing the roofing. That's about 85% to 90% done. They just have to do some curving for mechanicals and then make those connections, but the shingles are 90% done. Second floor drywall installation, demolition of the original main entry, and first floor drywall finishing. Currently working with the architects, Ton and Blank, Judge Welker and Prosecutor Gomer regarding furniture planning for their offices and have been working with all of them regarding appliances. Still working with the architects to address some concerns that Judge Welker has, which I think we've mostly been able to address today. And what hasn't been addressed will be addressed when the architect is in town meeting with us next week. Any questions on the Justice Center? Courthouses, the constructor and the architect need to hash out a few differences between their calendars, but we largely have a project schedule in place. In order to deal with additional steps that come with lease rental versus general obligation bond and establishing a building corporation, making sure that we dive into every possible hiccup and obstacle, given the historic nature and age of the building, making sure that we devote due time and consideration to finding the best places to relocate office temporarily and to avoid any hiccups with the general election and the location of the clerk's office. We're currently looking at early to mid-November for construction start. That'll give us plenty of time to make sure the design process is checked, double-checked, and triple-checked. Make sure that we find the most cost-effective places to put departments temporarily, try to get files scanned or otherwise moved so that they're accessible during construction and have as smooth of a project as possible. Matt Irtin, the architect, hopes to have updated conceptual drawings to me ended this week, early next week, and that'll involve a couple of options where office, like Department One, might be in different places in the different options, might do a different couple of things with the circuit courtroom and its transformation to a meeting room in the different options, but he'll have those to me late this week, early next week. I will get them out to you, steering committee members, affected office holders, and after everyone has had a week or so to digest all the information, I will be putting together another steering committee meeting. Any questions on the courthouse project? IMT updates. Like most Indiana counties, we are yellow on the weekly two metric score map. There are hand few of blue counties, five orange counties, no red counties right now. We're one of far fewer counties that are also yellow on the advisory level map. Far more are still orange, only one is blue, and four are still red. Accumulative total cases in the vicinity of 3,050, which is up only 40 since I reported a month ago. At that point, we had seen an increase of 314 in a three-week period. So transmission in Placeta County has clearly slowed measurably. Gravity's last testing day here at the site in Winnemac will be Saturday, the 19th of March. Vaccine distribution has declined significantly. The health department has two clinic sessions this month at which they'll be offering both pediatric and adult Pfizer doses, this Wednesday, the 9th, and Wednesday, the 23rd, both from 1:00 to 5:00. Hospital has relaxed inpatient visitor restrictions. Doors will start being unlocked on the weekends moving forward. They're still seeing a high number of patients displaying COVID symptoms, so even as restrictions have been relaxed and cases have dropped, they're still implementing isolation and precautions when they have suspected patients, continue to urge this kind of vigilance in public. And the CDC's recent updates to masking guidelines did not include healthcare facilities, so hospitals are still required to have masks in all their facilities. Any questions on IMT? And I believe we have a meeting tomorrow at 8:30. Broadband, I think everyone knows by now, Lieutenant Governor Crouch's office recently designated us as a broadband-ready community after I had submitted that resolution you adopted last year. In recognition of this and other progress we're making as part of the Aspirations in Action Program, Community Foundation has scheduled a celebration for late May. The Lieutenant Governor will be appearing. I will soon need to work with you and the Highway Department to establish whatever kind of right-of-way utility permit works for Highway. And pursuant to the resolution and the expectations of the broadband-ready program, whatever fees Highway may choose to implement for other access to rights of way, that is something where we will have to waive any permit fees in the future on broadband. Our task force has meetings set up later this week with two of the providers looking at making broadband investments in the community, and I'll be setting up a meeting with Lightstream in the near future because not only are they local and have invested millions already, but I expect they will continue to seek opportunities to expand their footprint in the community. At some point, we will probably need to start having a conversation with the commissioners and the council, whether it's ARPA or other funding sources, to determine if there is a strategy that the county wants to develop for having any skin in the game of its own in pushing broadband beyond simply being broadband-ready. This is a very important first step, including that permit application, but that might be a conversation we want to have in the future if we're serious about trying to bring broadband to every acre of the county, as I think the task force motto suggests. That's a question for another day.
Does the drainage board get involved in this, or when we start changing tables?
They will be part of that with actual projects. Right now, we haven't seen anything other than what Lightstream has already done, and the companies we have meetings with, they're still waiting to see if they're going to get state grant funding to proceed, but Highway will be involved in that conversation and Drainage Board will have to be as well, which of course is the three of you with Jenny. Last thing, you may recall, the CDC's bylaws have a provision whereby I need to come to you and inform you of any at-large appointees we've made, in case you have any concerns, and give you opportunity to put any vetoes or objections you have in writing for me to take back to the CDC. We have one at-large reappointment right now, and I'm hoping to have one more new appointee later this year, but I am asking for you to express any concerns you may have to the reappointment of Kelsey Zellers. She's finished a three-year term. She's been on our executive board for a couple of years and has been voted in to continue doing that, assuming there are no objections to her continued service. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
You did announce written form about the annual meeting?
Yes, that's coming up April 12th. We are another week or so soliciting partner invitations, and then we'll see what our capacity is and go public with invitations like we have in the past. But as of right now, I think we have about 40 people already registered. And our guest speaker will be Dr. Michael Hicks from Ball State. We're really looking forward to him, to having him here, three years after he was originally supposed to visit with us, or two years. That's all I've got.
Any other questions for Nathan, or any questions about his handout tonight?
Thank you.
I think someone walked in the door. You were first when you did this. I want to know.
I know, I apologize for the words. The wooden coaster, it was sticking in my head.
That's okay.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Mix. I'm with Purdue Extension, and I am a community wellness coordinator. I have been, I had met with the Town Board of Francisville, and, because they had contacted, well, someone had contacted me about, over by their baseball field, which is on North Bill Street, but then it turns into 1450, and, which is a county road. And one of the things that they had said is that it was really a dangerous situation for kids when baseball games are playing. Cars just park everywhere. It's really, and it's a very wide road because it's really made for semis. And so, one of the things that I had approached the Town Board with was a grant to use for temporary traffic calming, to see if it would work. When I made this presentation to the Francisville Town Board, they really wanted to make sure that because it includes 1450, that someone, that whomever would like to be a part of the decision-making and talking about it, I'm trying to make some kind of meeting, probably in April. And so I wanted to see if, I just wanted to introduce the idea to you, and in the packet is this booklet, and it just, one of the things that we're probably thinking about is a crosswalk. And, but it's also going to include the companies that are on 1450 because that's their traffic. And this, when a road is really, really wide, it invites speed, and that's just, that's just human nature. And so, this project was to really think about, how can we slow down traffic? And slowing it down, there's a lot of different ways to do it. At this point, though, you don't really know what's going to work there, because if you put in a crosswalk and nobody uses it, what good, what good is it? So you try to do something temporary first to see if people will work with it, and you really want to engage the community with it too, because if they're a part of it, they're going to embrace the idea. So, this is just, this book gives you a bunch of pictures of different kinds of crosswalks and stuff, and as well as, and I apologize, most of these are all black and white, but the cross, there's crosswalks here and ideas. My favorite is the peanuts one, that as you're driving up to it, you're looking at peanuts crossing the streets, the whole peanuts gang, but when you really come close to it, you actually see how stretched it is, because it needs to be stretched in order to look normal as you're driving up. Anyway, so I wanted to inform you that we are going to have some kind of meeting, and I don't have dates. I can just tell you generally, it's going to be in April. I am also going to contact the council and let them know, because this is just an important, it's important for Francisville. They were very open to the idea, but there's several entities that really need to be taken into account in order to make this happen. Because it's temporary, we can use regular paint, latex paint, we can use chalk, if you want it to be really short-term. There's, just to see how it works. And then once we see if it's working, if it's working, then we can look into grants to see if we can make it a little bit more permanent. So, that is, I don't know how you would like to determine who would attend the meeting, or all of you would like to, but I, that's part of what I just wanted to present, was if we could get a joint meeting for all parties involved, just so we can at least consider getting this done, because it really is a dangerous situation when, when you're crossing, when people are, because they're coming in between cars and all different cars, and it's crazy. So if we have one spot for them to cross at, at least it's a little bit safer to, to deal with.
I talked to our county highway superintendent, once I saw you were on the agenda about, if he willing to turn this committee as well as myself.
Great.
And, you know, we were just kind of brainstorming ourselves, if it could even be some type of, like, yellow light that he would set out during game days. Those are just crosswalks, you can drive over that every day, and then it's.
Oh, I agree with you.
Driving over every day, so we, we have some ideas too that we would share, so as soon as you get your vehicle meeting, set up, Gary and I would be delighted to attend that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. Mellon. One, one of the things that actually started this was that there's a grant that I didn't think we would be eligible for because of the name of it. It's called tactical urbanism. And I'm like, well, that certainly wouldn't fit us in a rural area, but really it is, because it's, it's for, just for traffics, it's temporary solutions for traffic calming, and so, and it could be an event, a one-day event, it could, it was a lot of different things, but that deadline was, has come and gone. And so, but it will, I was told it will come back again next year. Now with that grant, you can, we can actually try with those flashing lights and stuff because it's a temporary measure and it's expensive, and in order to get something more elaborate like that, it, the cost becomes too much if we don't have a lot of funding. Now I do have another grant in mind that may be able to pay for something like that. I don't know exactly what the cost of them are. I did look them up, but there's so many different things, so, but I appreciate it, and I'll contact you when we have something going. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you.
If you were down to other business, would you approve when you sign the claims payroll number five?
Okay, I looked at claims and payroll, and then I made a motion to approve that.
Move and seconded? Any other discussion on the claims payroll number five? All favors the honor.
Aye.
Move on signing of the minutes, we have the February 7 minutes, and February 22nd. We also had the February 25th, thank you, Stacey, for here reviewing our veteran service. Have a motion to approve those requests of that?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Move and seconded? Any other discussion? All favors the honor.
Aye.
We have some conference requests from the highway garage, Gary Kruger, David Olds, Nancy Davis, Mrs. from the road to road school, and this is March 15th, 16th. I do these together, we also have the recorder, Susan Fox, for the state mandated recorder conference, April 19th, 21st, and in January.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve all those conference requests.
Move and seconded? Any other discussion? All favors the honor.
Aye.
And, what other business? Here, Kevin, do you want to explain this new, what's, not one inch, but I, request for, we came with a fund, so I just got London, $432.36. Third opinion?
I simply disagree over a, over not being sold, a certain tax, if it's available to property, the personal property being affected by a judge's effect, it does, from an entity, giving that possession to the, to property owners, and then this is providing a perfect, uh, certificate of months. That would be a tax fee because of the, and a number of other reasons that you may not be able to protect, but rather than getting all the obligation over it, mine, refund of $732.
$732.36.
Okay, there you go. And, and then readdress which railroad property you think is selling in future. It may be expensive, so.
Basically, you need a motion to refund London's $732.36.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Move and seconded? Further discussion? Receive what my name is. Yes, I have documentation like that. Any other discussion? All favors the honor.
Aye.
We have a SRI amendment on the, I don't see that, we will table that item.
I review that.
Amendment?
Yeah. It was fine since the extension of the contract, it does ultimately tax sales for us.
So that.
It's 15% of the, the capital.
So this being a redundant situation, given this witness this, you have a motion to approve the SRI amendment?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the SRI.
Move and seconded? Other discussion? All favors the honor.
Aye.
There is a contract. And, one other action business, I did want to bring up something, add some information on the grant, on the ambulance, of one time we were looking at only having 25% of cost, and the grant came back, the grant was only funding 35%. The grant is only funding thirty-five percent, which means the county is funding sixty-five percent. So, this changes our numbers drastically, and I would say we'll probably have this on the agenda at our compensation. We can move down the road. Another bit of information will be, we have a meeting set on Monday, April eleventh. We have recurrent insurance, carrier's health insurance, we can begin that process. And then the other items on the list. Any other comments?
Thank you, Nathan. We attended the February twenty-second meeting at which Mr. Mellon read a statement regarding the UDO changes. Gentlemen, you do not have a problem with the UDO. The UDO is not burdensome. If it were, why are we hosting the largest US solar development in the country? The UDO was in place at the time that the solar developers signed the contracts with the landlords. It was in place at the time they filed the application. Why didn't Nextera apply if our UDO was burdensome? We have over eleven thousand three hundred acres filed currently with solar. Innogy Energy is waiting to file another three thousand acres. The current UDO is not burdensome. If it was, this would not be the case. The problem is, you are not following the UDO, the DZA, rules of procedure, and the comprehensive plan. Eliminating the rules will not eliminate the problem. Our question for you is, have you read the proposed changes that you approved at the last meeting? Are you aware of all the changes? We have asked for a summary of those changes, and we were given a link to one hundred and thirty-four pages that contain the changes within that text. So we went through the painful task of comparing line by line to identify the changes that you are approving to be sent to the ATC. A copy of that is in front of you. There's six pages of them. So our question is, do you know what the proposed changes will do? Do you know what the consequences are? And there will be consequences. You cannot rely on someone else's summary of what is in the changes or what's included, but we have provided a summary for you to go through those changes. You need to read them. You need to understand them, and you need to only approve if you feel like they are appropriate. And then also, is there a need for the changes? Who do they benefit? Do they benefit the community, the county, or the solar developers? This is not about if you are for or against solar. This is about how are you going to oversee the projects? What is going to be acceptable? How are you going to protect all Placeta County residents and property owners? The goal should not be to make the job easier or more profitable for the solar developer. The solar developer didn't have a problem with the current UDO when they filed. Do not remove protections and safeguards that were in place to protect the county. If you eliminate these standards, who will you be inviting in? Why eliminate public hearings and comments? I think you're sending the wrong message to the public. They weaken the development standards. Look at what is being presented, what you proposed, and make your best informed decision. Removing these requirements will be difficult, if not impossible, to reverse. Making solar a permitted use will give you no control to limit the number of acres that will be lost to agriculture, which is a complete contradiction to the comprehensive plan. Raising the noise level limit to sixty decimals instead of the current fifty, Manas Solar stated their equipment doesn't make noise. Nextera stated that this is not a problem for them. They will just position the inverters, which make the most noise, further away from adjacent property owners. They didn't seem to have a problem at all with the fifty decimal limitation we had in place. So my question is, why are we increasing it to sixty decimals? Why, why are we putting the burden on the residents? Please read the summary we provided to you of the six pages of changes. We ask that you please review them and make a determination if it's in the best interest of the county residents that you have been elected to represent. Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, we can comment on that. Item number four. We'd interviewed four individuals. We selected a veterans' service officer. But he has, since that time, been in the higher-up position, serving at the same capacity. And when we talked to him, that was kind of his goal. He went on with his goal, so now we're just going to have to table this tonight and search a little further. If I can stay with him, counting in and proceeding. Another business, I would make a voting for the jury. Second, all favors say aye?
Aye.